If you can't marry me, how shall you contend with me? Praise God, hallelujah. The Holy Ghost is here. Praise God as we welcome our precious pastor Chinamasa even. Hallelujah. Let's be in the spirit, amen. Let's be on expectation, hallelujah. Don't think after what we've experienced these two nights, we can be anything else. The Lord is here. His wonders to perform. Praise God as we sing that song again, "Can't you see?" Why I'm so happy, hallelujah, as we welcome our precious pastor Chinamasa. Minister the word to us, hallelujah. Oh, can you see? Why I'm so happy? I accept the Lord. Oh, the Lord, Jesus Christ. Very dear. Oh, let us go. Again. I am a prophet. Oh, my God. Hallelujah. Oh, can you see? Why I'm so happy? Oh, I accept the Lord. Oh, the Lord, Jesus Christ. Very dear. Oh, let us go. I am a prophet. Oh, my God. Amen. You may take your seats. I want to read you all in the precious name of the Lord Jesus Christ. We want to appreciate the Lord for bringing us back to the house of prayer. It's doing well, much better. Okay, praise the Lord. Where is my monitor there? God bless you. Please leave my monitors place so that I don't keep on giving you problem and saying, "Let's do this, let's do this." I want to take this time also to appreciate all the ministers for such a wonderful cooperation. And I want to appreciate Pastor Elias for the invitation and Pastor Xavier also for his cooperation. May the good Lord bless them richly and may they continue, may he continue to use them mightfully. And all the ministers, your wives, your children, the deacons, the ushers, the trustees, the soul leaders, every one of you. May the good Lord bless you. And I say to you, you are such a lovely, wonderful people. You are such a nice people. You are such a wonderful people and full of faith. And full of the love of God. God bless you richly and grant all of you, your heart is desire. God be with you till we meet again. Let us stand to our feet. Because sinners. I can face tomorrow. Because sinners. Oh, fear is gone. Because I know, yes, I know. He owns my own chance. In my faith will come a new chance. Because sinners. Because sinners. I can face tomorrow. Because sinners. Oh, fear is gone. Because I know, yes, I know. He owns my own chance. In my faith will come a new chance. Because sinners. Let us pray. If you have any need, you can identify it by lifting up your head. Precious Lord of Jesus, we thank you. We appreciate you, oh God and the Father. We thank you for bringing us back again to the house of prayer. We thank you, Lord, for these meetings that you have arranged even for us, oh God, and how you are faithful to come every day, every service, Friday, Saturday. And today we have come, oh God and the Father, to the last day of these meetings this week, oh God. We pray that you may be with us, Lord, in a special way, that, oh God, as we read your word, as we come to the most important part of this service, may the word of God, oh God and the Father, with the power to save the sinner, to give the signal of faith, to distribute to us, oh God and the Father, the joy of all salvation. Grant the needs of your people, they lift up their heads identifying different needs and desires. We ask, oh God and the Father, that you come and minister to each one of us, Lord, to start with the preacher. Give me strength to restore to me my voice, oh God, and the Father, anoint me more and more, and the Father, for the services starting from today and coming ahead of us, Lord. We thank you. We pray, as we give you the glory and honor, in the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, asking every request to be given in Jesus' name. Bless the scriptures, bless the preaching and the healing, in Jesus' name, amen. Just want to read maybe Joel chapter, chapter one, want to read from this one. Joel, chapter one, want to start from verse one, the Bible reads. "The word of the Lord that came to Joel, the son of Patro. Hear this yea, O name, and give ye, O you inhabitants of the land. Had this been in your days, or even in the days of your fathers? Tell your children of it, and let your children tell their children, and their children in another generation. That which the palm went, yet left, had the locust eaten; and that which the locust yet left, had the canker went, eaten; and that which the canker went, yet left, had the caterpillar eaten. Awake, ye drunkards and wimp, and how ye, O you drunkards, drinkers of wine, because of the new wine, for it is cut off from your mouth." Want to go to chapter two from verse 25, it says, "And I will restore to you the years that the locust had eaten, the canker went, and the caterpillar. And the palm went, my great army which I send among you. And ye shall eat in plenty, and be satisfied. And praise the name of the Lord, ye, oh God, that it do wonders with you, and my people shall never be ashamed. And ye shall know that I am in the midst of Israel, and that I am the Lord, your God, and none else; and my people shall never be ashamed. And ye shall come to pass after what thou didst, O power, my spirit, upon your flesh; and your sons and your daughters shall prophesy, your old men shall drink bread, your young men shall see bread." Then let us go to chapter one again. We want to read verse eight. Someone said, "Praise the Lord." "But ye shall receive power after that the Holy Ghost is come upon you, and ye shall be witnesses unto me, both in Jerusalem and in Judea, and in Samaria, and unto the uttermost part of the earth." Let us pray. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for the word that we have just read. Father, we have done our part. We wait for the fulfillment of the same word by the manifestation of your Spirit, which will fill your presence. Come, Lord, and hear the premonition, in Jesus' name, amen. You may take your seats. I want to talk on just a simple subject, not very complicated. You know, the Bible says that Jesus was here on earth, common people hearing gladly. Your body is not yet to where it's supposed to be. Common people hear him gladly, and I believe we are just common people who must hear him gladly. We must rejoice in the coming of the word. When the word is coming forth, we receive the word with our amens, with our hallelujahs. Just remove the echo and put the fore and foreman, remove the pest, the echo and all that. When the word is coming forth, it's not, it's not. I don't know what's, what's happening, but I think it will work out well, to work out well. When the word is coming forth, we should not just dare at the preacher. Amen. We should receive it with joy. How can I go to do that today? How can I go to do that this morning? Amen. Yesterday you were doing very well. Yesterday you were participating well. Yesterday I saw God working among us, may we do the same what we did yesterday, so that we have the same results. And even more, for he is more than able to do exceedingly, more than what we can ask him to give us. I saw people receiving the voice. I saw people under the power of the Holy Ghost. But I want to say this, friends. I know some of these things are kind of like a little bit new to you, but just watch the preacher and to give you the signal. Some ways shaking people who are under the power of the Holy Ghost. Don't do that. Leave them. Just monitor them. Watch the attitude of the preacher. Deacons, ministers, just watch the attitude of the preacher. It's the word which is causing those things, so just watch from where the word is coming from, to see. Sometimes you can, you can rebuke the Holy Ghost thinking it's a demon, when it's the Holy Ghost. Sometimes you bless a demon thinking it's the Holy Ghost. This is why we need in the church that desenment of spirits. Do you understand this? You know, the Holy Ghost is not a word of confusion. That's why it's called the Holy Spirit. I've seen the Holy Ghost come and strike a woman with a little baby. Nothing wrong. The baby will not be harmed by no way. It's the Holy Spirit. Some they get distracted by the Holy Ghost and they are just like as a dead man. Don't pour water on them. Let them alone. Just keep on using yourself. Unless it's a demon. Where sometimes they are violent, but the Holy Ghost is just right on time. I have seen so many times when evil spirits comes out and people wants to fight me, they come right there. So many times it happened there in South Africa. I was there, another girl was demon possessed, she came there and she was saying, "Chinamasa, you see what you are causing now?" I was preaching on the baptism of the Holy Ghost and all that. I was saying, my subject was going to do it again, what is done in the past, it will be again. And I was saying, the Holy Ghost will come back again. And that, right at that time, when the Holy Ghost was almost to strike everyone, that demon was very angry and said, "You see what you are now causing? You see now what you are causing things to happen in this church? I don't want this Holy Ghost to think here to happen, but that's the Holy Ghost that preached deliverance." Yeah, maybe, yes. This one is good. Don't put off your feelings. Get off your heads from that thing. So she began to be frightened, but right at that time, my wife was there and some deacon brother was there. But the first time when I was in that church, I was almost beaten by some demons there, but this time I was almost beaten thrice. But the Holy Ghost was just in charge and God protects his servants. Just be around and monitor. You see, you don't know what it is, when someone is rejoicing under the power of the Holy Ghost and you shake them to bring them out, that experience will never come back. On their level, that somebody they feel, "Oh, who was this now who came to touch me when I was having my wonderful time and praising my Lord?" Imagine you are eating very nice food and you are wanting a very big piece and this, maybe it's a tin bowl, maybe it's a reed, and you are really enjoying it. Then somebody just comes in and say, "Pile it away from you like this." Imagine what you feel. So we must know and understand these things. Be alert, deacons, be alert ministers, but let's also be spiritual. You see, the Holy Ghost this Sunday was working so perfect. I was here and some demons were coming up there. The Holy Ghost just say, "Go and repeat this." And I went and did. The time I came to the pastor and say, "I think the person must make right this and that," he said, "That's exactly the truth." That was the Holy Ghost. And once the devil was exposed, he's dead. You hear someone speaking terms, "Wait, be reverent, be quiet, be in prayer silently, oh Lord, speak to me." Pastor, not all generals. You hear that the tongues are not interpreted. Why can't you pray saying, "Lord, how can you just come here and go away? If that somebody gives uncertain sound, how do we prepare for him to hear the interpretation coming forth? Then after the interpretation, that's when you can say, "Praise the Lord." What if still going on your peace, what if the interpretation saying, the prophet saying, "Be careful, there are soldiers there with guns to shoot you," and you are pissed. You'll be shocked at when God has already warned you. The prophet says, "The Holy Ghost may come and say, 'Tell brother, sister, so to move away from his house,' because he's close to the railway line. The train is going to get off the track." And tell him to move away from the house and leave your house. Now we are busy making noise when he's going forth. And you go and sit there and you take your carton chest and you fold your legs and arms there, the train comes and marches your, then later on you notice God and warned you. Spiritual things, spirituality design. But I want to thank you. Yesterday I was almost gone. I was gone. We were busy enjoying food, the sister likes a good, nice food, brother, and we were really enjoying on the table. Somehow, I don't know how it happened, I missed to chew the bone. And it was, to the other end was very sharp. Then it just went and closed right here. So, and it was piercing at the other side. So I said to the, "I'm chopped, I swallowed the bone." So the pastor thought I was joking. My wife thought I was joking. So I stood up. I think I was drinking the glass. I told you, "Oh, nothing happened." I said, "Can I have some water?" The sister, one of the sisters, the twin sister came, came with the water, and she was trying to do this, you know. It was no time for that to do this. I really need a second just to throw the ice over here, and I tried to take it back. I began to say in my heart, "Lord, help me." The Bible says that, "Present help me in terrible times." When I said that, something said, "Tell the pastor to go up Doctor Chikolo there," because I could not talk to God for a minute. I didn't know what was becoming of me. I began to think a lot of things. So I just said, "Go, Doctor Chikolo," as I was going up there to the bathrooms. And I was just praying in my heart. I said, "Lord, help me." I began to think if the doctor comes, will I still be alive? And if they take me, I didn't want them to cut my neck to take the thing out. I feel that I'm going in. So I went there and the pastor called the doctor, and the doctor was also performing another operation somewhere. It was too late for him to come. So he taught him what to do and he followed me to the bathroom there. I don't know what he was doing there. Then I began to throw up. I don't know whether that thing came out or it went down. So, and I, I didn't want food anymore. My chair was determined yesterday. So I began to think, "Oh, my wife is going to carry the coffee to sit with the children," and I began to think, "If they cut my neck, just..." I was not going to be here preaching if they had to. But you know, God is our messenger. The guy who was a goat, I was talking, I was God. So when we went for the breakfast, I tried to eat then. I thought that thing, yeah, I still need prayers, but I'm out of danger. The devil is a liar, and the prophet says the devil can do nothing. If ever I ever take my life until God is finished with me, I am still here and I'm here, but hey, in the name of Jesus Christ, to please the pastor. Let you never take your life away until God is done with you. No cat will take away your life away until God is finished with you. No, if I see others who take your life away until God is finished with you. No asthma, no nothing, no cat aspect, let you never take your life away until God is finished with you. Nations to whom? I'm here today, everybody, to praise the Lord. And I'm here to preach. I'm here to finish my task. I'm here to finish my mission. The preach I come here for, I'm here to finish it, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. And I'm speaking on restoration time. That's my title today. Today is a restoration time. It's a season of restoration. What is restoration? To bring back that we should be before. What is restoration? To bring it back, to do it again. It's restoration time. What ever you have lost, I bring you restoration. What ever has taken away from you, I bring you restoration. It's restoration time. The Bible says, "Ask for rain in the season of rain." This is the season of restoration. There's power in season. There's power in every season. If you want to plant and harvest, make sure you're planting in the season of the rain, then you have a proper harvest. When the night comes, you don't force yourself to sleep in the season power. You just find yourself calm until the next morning, you wake up and you realize that things, why the season power? It's getting a little bit hard, why? The sun has turned out. It's the season power. Country tonight, the sky is a snow. Why the season power? You are forced to buy jackets. You are forced to buy new things because of the season power. You can't stop that. You can't stop the season. You can't stop the season. You can't stop the rain, you can't stop the season. It's the season power. The devil is strong. He can't stop the season, the season power. He has elements to move, to come together, until you're in your full restoration. It's restoration time. It's a season of restoration. It's a season of your restoration. It's a season of your restoration. It's a season of your food. It's a season of restoration. It's a season of the rain. It's a season of the power. It's a season of the rest. It's a season of God's movement in the church, in the light, in our hearts. Season power. Tell your neighbor, it's restoration time. Tell your wife, honey, it's restoration time. Tell your children, it's the restoration time. And I'm here to praise the church. I'm here to praise the faith. I'm here to praise the believer. I'm here to praise the saints. I'm here to praise the deaf people. I'm here to praise your faith. I'm here to praise the brothers. I'm here to praise the media. It's restoration time. Let the thundermen be praised. Let the caterpillar have eaten. Let the palm of the president. Let the lettuce have eaten. I will restore. Save the world. Let the children away from you. Let the dry feed have eaten. Let the asthma have eaten. Let the town have eaten. If a town has eaten your neighbors, I will restore saints to heaven. If God has defeated your family, I will restore saints to heaven. If Adam has defeated your child, I will restore saints to heaven. If cigarettes have defeated your health, I will restore saints to heaven. If meat has defeated your health, and there's oppression, I will restore. Save the world. Put your hands together. I will restore. I will restore. Let you please yourself. I will restore. Save the world. Let you make it out yourself. I will restore. Save the world. Let you live by yourself. I will restore. Save the world. And the restoration is the place of God. Restoration is the way to face. Restoration is the way to face. Restoration is the way to face. When the thief breaks into your house and you steal yourself money, you left your iPad, you got to report to the police. It's not you who look for the thief. If the police should be to look for the thief and the press, you report your case to Jesus Christ. You report your case to the mother. You report your case. And the police officer, the holy officer, the police agent, to give a fast restoration, bring first of all, bring it back, bring it back, bring it back, second, bring it back, second, bring it back, bring my children back, bring my children back, bring my husband back, bring my husband back, bring my business back, bring my business back, bring it back, bring it back, bring it back, second. Lay down, lay down. You are arrested. You are arrested. You are arrested. And the police officer, the holy ghost. Bring it back. Bring it back. Bring it back. Whatever you lost, I will restore. Save the world. Restore unto me the joy of restoration. Restore unto me the joy of restoration. Bring it back. Bring it back. Bring my children back in the favor. Bring my children back in the favor. If your children alcoholic, I give you back your children to the favor. I give you back your children back to salvation. Bring it back. Bring it back. Bring it back. Second, bring that back. Bring that back in the house of God. Bring my husband back. Bring my husband back. Bring my child back. Bring my child back. Bring my daughter back. Bring my business back. Bring my business back. Bring it back. Bring it back. Come and pray. Report your case. 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 I will restore. Save the world. In the name of Jesus. Bring it back. Bring it back. Bring it back, second. Bring it back. Bring it back. Bring it back. Bring it back. Bring my mother back. Bring my dad back. Bring my child. Bring my girl. Bring my boy back in church. Bring it back. Bring it back. Bring it back. I love this part. Save the world. I will restore. Save the world. Let you fight for it. I will restore. Let you protect the Bible. I will restore. Save the world. It's in the Mount of Ezekiel, in the valley, where there are dry bones. The Bible says, "Very dry," and God started an issue. There was a war to be fought. There was a war to be fought, and God came down to Ezekiel and said, "Ezekiel, can these dry bones..." can these dry bones leave? Can that be a disciple here? Can these dry bones leave? Ezekiel, thou art a prophet. Ezekiel, thou art a man of fire. Can these dry bones leave? Ezekiel said, Lord, thou knowest, thou knowest, thou knowest. And God said, Ezekiel, speak to my dry bones. Speak to the dry bones. The word has come, come to the prophet. The word has come, come to the prophet. Ezekiel, thou art a prophet. Ezekiel, thou art a prophet. Speak to the dry bones. And Ezekiel stood there, looking at dry bones in the valley, and he said, you try water. Hear the word of the Lord. You try situations. Hear the word of the Lord. You try a hand. Hear the word of the Lord. You try a hand. You try promises. Hear the word of the Lord. 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 I'm speaking the Lord, in the name of Jesus. I'm speaking to try situations. I'm speaking to try traditions. I'm speaking to try promises. I'm speaking to try encounters, in the name of Jesus Christ. Hear the word of the Lord. And there was another point there. Maybe of this party here, it just jumped. And another point there, just jumped. He said, you try box. Hear the voice of God. Ezekiel, he was standing right there. He saw a bird flying in the air, and it came, and it connected with another bird. Another bird, the companion, started connecting, point to point. Every point, new words came from, every point, new rightful position, that's restoration. The arm went back to his position. The arm went back to the rightful position, point to point. I want to hear the sound of birds coming together. I want to hear the sound of birds coming together. I want to hear sound of the birds coming together. Come on my brother, come on my sister, point to point, point to point, point to point, point to point. Thomas and Mary, Thomas and Mary, hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen. The point there in the church, the hallelujahs, you should be in the church. The fiancees, you should be in the church. The places, you should be there, in the church. The amen, the amen, I'll be back to the church. The hallelujahs, I'll be back to the church. The places, I'll be back to the church. Amen, 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 amen. Point to point, point to point, point to point, point to point. I'm proud, let me tell you, can this man live? Can this man live? Can that be a disciple here? Can that be a disciple? Thou knowest the Lord, thou knowest the Lord, thou knowest the Lord. Get the crystal case in the house of God. And listen to me, somebody, in the house of God. And listen to me, in the house of God. And this man live, point to, you shall hear the voice of God. You shall hear the voice of God. You shall praise God. You shall worship God in the field, in the spirit. Oh, hallelujah, the holy ghost, the power, and God, we'll be back to the church again. I will restore, save the world. Let's have church, my friend. Let's have church, please. Let's have church here. Let's have church. Let's give the devil a time. Let's give... I'm telling you, brother sister, people are doing it. People praise him up. People worship him. People show him. That's the way to receive your blessings. 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 That's the way to receive. That's the way, that's the way, that's the way, that's the way. It's the way to worship him, to praise him, to praise him, praise him. Worship, worship, hallelujah. Where you worship, you receive. Where you praise, you receive. Where you worship him, he blesses you, he blesses you. Well, hallelujah. Worship him, brother. Worship him, brother. Worship him, brother. Bless you, brother. Bless you, brother. Yes, hallelujah, yes, hallelujah, yes, hallelujah. And keep your heart in the favor, in the name of Jesus Christ. You praise God, you worship him, you worship him, you worship him. I will restore. Let the people ask. I will restore, save the world. Let the devil put away from you. I will restore, save the world. You lost your happiness. I will restore, save the world. You lost your joy. I will restore, save the world. You lost your joy. I will restore. Somebody please give back your joy. Somebody please give back your joy. Somebody please give back your joy, in the name of Jesus Christ. Somebody please give back your joy, in the name of Jesus Christ. Somebody please give back your joy. Somebody please give back your joy. Somebody please give back your joy. Please give back your joy. Restore to me, the joy of restoration. Restore to me, the joy of restoration. I want to pray, the way I used to pray. I want to fast, the way I used to fast. I want to read my Bible, the way I used to read my Bible. I want to introduce the Bible, the way I used to introduce the Bible. I want to feel the grace, the way you used to come. I want to feel the weight. I want to feel the magic. I want to feel the power and the holiness, the same way, like in the past. I want the right to empower, that's never again a problem. Restore to me, the holiness. Restore to me, the glory to me. Restore to me, we just to preach our sinners. Restore to me, we just to preach ten minutes, the holy ghost coming down. Restore to me, the baby of the holiness. We did preach sinners, the power of God, through the church. Restore to me, restore to me, restore to me, restore to me, my powerful life. Restore to me, my fighting life. This is the story. This is the story. This is the story. This is the story. This is the name of Jesus Christ. I tell you, this is the name of Jesus. This is the story. This is the story. This is the story. If you use the first three days, you're going to do the same. If you use to pray five hours, you're going to pray another day. If you use to pray two hours, you're going to pray another day. If you use to pray every day, you're going to pray every day. If you use to wake up at 1:00 AM, if you use to wake up at 1:00 AM, to pray, to pray, to pray. You're going to pray every day, and you're going to pray. I use up to hallelujah, thank you, Jesus, and you, Jesus, and you, Jesus. We use to have a prayer prayer. You have another prayer prayer. We use to have a prayer prayer. You have another prayer prayer. You pray through, you pray through. If there's a prayer answer, you use to have a prayer answer. Now, everything I'm telling you, everything I'm telling you, everything I'm telling you. Starting from now, 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 starting from now. That's the reply. Starting from now, that's the reply. That's the reply. That's the reply. That's the reply. That's the shouting again. That's 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 the shouting of the people, in the pain. That's the shouting of the people, in the pain. Hallelujah, me, come here, people, where are you? Pastor Peter, I want to preach. Pastor Peter, in the name of Jesus. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, this is Peter's name. You can't have Son, you can't have Son. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, I start to deliver you. The same as you do, I start to deliver you. I start to move you. I start to come to your church there. The holiness is here, the power of deliverance. The people will be targeted away. Devil will be targeted again. Evil spirits will be targeted again, from the house of God. Get in behind the church. Get in behind the church. Get in behind the church. Receive your restoration. Get in behind the church. Get in behind the church. Get in behind, get in behind the church. Get in behind the church. Get in behind, this is it. Get in behind, get in behind, shabbatism. Get in behind, a shabbatism. Get in behind, shabbatism. Get in behind, shabbatism. You've got a shabbatism, wish back. Get in behind, 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 in the name of Jesus Christ. Evil spirits are being casted up. Evil spirits are being casted up. I will restore, save the world. I will restore, save the world. Receive your restoration, in the name of Jesus Christ. Receive your restoration. Receive your restoration. Receive your restoration. Receive your restoration. You lose the two worlds of soul, I will restore, save the world. You lose the two worlds of soul, I will restore, save the world. I will restore, save the world. He will restore better life. He will restore better intelligence. He will restore better wisdom to your children. I will restore, receive your restoration, students. Receive your restoration, students, in the name of Jesus Christ. Students, receive your restoration, in the name of Jesus Christ. School God, yes, restoration. You're going to come out in distinction. You're going to come out in distinction. In the name of Jesus Christ. You shall eat in bread and praise the name of God. You shall eat in bread and praise the name of God. You shall eat in bread, you shall have to pray, idiot, and praise the name of God. You shall have times and praise the name of God. You shall have prophets and praise the name of God. You shall have witches and praise the name of God. You shall have powers, because of Jesus, and praise the name of God. You shall have a God's seed, and a God's living, and praise the name of God. You have to start to praise, you have to sing, the way he is here. You have to shout, you have to shout, you have to push, you have to praise the Lord. I say you must say your prayers. You have to shout, if you feel like shout, shout. If you feel like death, death. If you feel like shout, shout. Shout, if you feel like crying, cry. If you feel like weeping. Let's go to the mountains, to the mountains, to the mountains, worship them. Either one of which is God, yes, come here, I guess you might know us. Let the spirit of the professor, we shall have the one of the time.
Yes.
We shall have the one of the time in the life. We shall have the one of the time in the life. I will restore to you, yes. I will restore, save the world. I will restore, save the world. I will restore, yes. If God has made it, was he who got the Jesus Christ, yes. In the name of Jesus Christ, seven power, seven finger power, seven miracle, seven healing. I will restore, the name will welcome, the name will rise again, the people will welcome it. Do me a favor. Do me a favor. Do me a favor. Start to count the years of your suffering, and God says, I will restore to you, yes. Oh, yes. All many years, counted it, and God says, I will restore to you, yes. How many years, how many years you've been sick? How many years you've been without a job? How many years you've been without a child? How many years without peace? How many years? How many years? How many years? How many years without the perfect? How many years? How many years? I will restore, save the world. How many years you've been sick? How many years you've been suffering? How many years you've been crying? I will restore to you, yes. I will restore to you, yes. I say, I will restore to you, yes. I will restore to you, yes. I will restore to you, yes. Come on, receive your restoration, in the name of Jesus Christ. Receive your restoration, according to the word of God. I say, count how many years you've been in that condition. How many years you've been in that situation? How many years you've been suffering? How many years you've been receiving your grace? How many years with a micronet? Receive your healing from a micronet. Receive your healing, receive your healing. I say, receive your healing. I impugn that micronet, in the name of Jesus Christ. Your heal, your heal, your heal, from micronets. Your heal, from micronets, in the name of Jesus Christ. I speak it, I speak it, in the name of Jesus Christ. Somebody please give a healing for my brother here. Somebody please give a healing for my brother here. Somebody please give a healing for my brother here. When we sit it, in the name of Jesus Christ. I test the disease, I test the pain, I test that darkness that finds your eyes. In the name of Jesus Christ. I impugn that shadow darkness. I impugn that darkness. I impugn that darkness, in the name of Jesus. Yes, receive your healing, in the name of Jesus Christ. You'll be, receive it in the name of Jesus Christ. That child which doesn't sleep all day, is going to sleep all day, in the name of Jesus Christ. Yes, that's the Holy Ghost. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you so much, thank you, Jesus. It is our blood. 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 It is our blood, in the name of Jesus Christ. Receive it for your children. You damn and dead spirit, in the name of Jesus Christ. I don't doubt you, you damn and dead spirit. I impugn it, in the name of Jesus Christ. Your child will speak. Your son will speak. Your child will speak. I give him a speech, in the name of Jesus Christ. My boy will speak. Yes, if you don't believe, that boy will speak, sister. If you don't believe, that boy will speak. I impugn that someone, in the name of Jesus Christ. I have seen that God speaks instead of you. I have seen that they talk to work. I know that I'm taking a bath, when in the presence of God. I have seen that death coming back to life. I know that I'm taking a bath. I impugn the devil. I impugn that sickness. I impugn the people here, which doesn't hear, who put your finger there, in... I impugn it for the ear, which doesn't hear, who put your finger there, in that ear, who put your finger, in that left ear, and receive your hearing, in the name of Jesus Christ. No put your finger in that right ear, no put your finger in that ear which doesn't hear well. Receive your blessing to hear it. Come in here, well. Receive your blessing to hear it, in the name of Jesus Christ. Yes, receive your blessing to hear it. Receive your blessing to hear it. Receive your blessing to hear it, in the name of Jesus Christ, and your blessing to sight. I impugn brightness, in the name of Jesus Christ. I impugn it, I can turn it, in Jesus' name. You have to do it, don't speak it, this, that's the power of the Holy Ghost. I will restore, God will restore hearing. God will restore back your sight. God will restore back your speech. God will restore back, I impugn the devil in the name of Jesus Christ. I impugn the devil. La 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 la, I impugn the devil. I impugn the devil. I impugn the devil. I speak eloquently, I speak eloquently, I speak eloquently. Who made the mouth to speak? Who made the ear to hear? I will restore your sight, save the Lord. I will restore your hearing, save the Lord. I will restore your feeling, save the Lord. When the phone is, you put in your left ear which was not hearing. Yes, sister, the Holy Ghost is waiting with you. Keep on rejoicing. Yes, sister, keep on praising God. Yes, yes, Hallelujah. Yes, that's the Holy Ghost. Rejoice together with the air. Rejoice together with the air. You know the prophet is saying, "You, sister, your name is so and so, and your problem is this, that another neighbor would smile, if you also, you smiled." When I was talking to her, also receive your name. If you smiled, receive your heart and desire, in the name of Jesus Christ. Receive it, my brother. Someone say, "I will restore."
I will restore.
Save the Lord.
Save the Lord.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So do me a favor, invite it in your town if you want. And count with the years of suffering of your suffering. If you remember when you started to be sick, what's the hell you are going to enjoy after this? Those legs that are too young, that you can't lift, you are going to tend to it. How can the devil come with you to church and to put you under the jail with sickness, when your weight is going full? How? Tell him, get behind this circle. I am in the house of God. This is my territory here. To a separate hero, there is, the men of soldiers, they've got a place higher, which sees every plane which comes in the country. They say, "This is our airspace." They don't allow any plane just to fly without notifying. And if they notices anything without, and check there with the radar, and they see that you didn't communicate, they say, "Where are you going? Who are you, mister?" This is our airspace. No signs from, you better let, or we pull you down. We are pulling down a stronghold. The pulling down of stronghold. We are having the book of provisions, the pulling down of stronghold. Who let that people spinning down? This is our airspace. We don't allow any persons here. This is our airspace. We don't allow sugar that bit this year. This is our airspace. We don't allow friendly agents here. This is our airspace. We don't allow a dancer here. This is our airspace. Come in soldiers. Take your machine gun. Leave it down in there. Hold up in the water, with the word of God. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. Please thank God. I cannot thank you God. But I cannot thank you Father. Take your machine gun. Keep on firing your bullets, keep on firing your bullets. Run down. And as the spirits, down. The spirit of lust, down. Compromising demons, down. Cosmetics, down. Fly by these events, segregation, down. Asthma, down. What's the blood, down. You know, when the prophet went to Finland, and the dead boy was raised back to life. The Finns and the Russians, they throwed their guns and hugged each other, they forgot they were in a war. When they saw the power of God, they forgot they were enemies, and they hugged each other. Their captains and commanders with pride, seeing soldiers in deep and uniform were hugging. Come on, hug your brother, come on, hug your sister. Brother to brother, sister to sister. Say, "We are brothers, we are sisters." We are brothers, we are sisters. We are brothers, we are sisters. With all this spirit, we says, "We are superior, I am superior, I am better than you, we are brothers, we are sisters in Christ Jesus, from the one spirit, and we are the best, in the name of Jesus Christ." I love you, brother. Call your sister, I love your sister, I love you, brother. Please, I love your brothers, I love your sisters. You pray for me, and I pray for you. You pray for me, and I will pray for you. You pray for me, brother, bigger than Beshu, and sister there, Beshu. Oh, white dude, pray for me. You pray for me, and I'll pray for you. If God uses a white man, like what he did to the prophet, you are thinking, "Receive, brother, brother, as a messenger." Don't say he was a white man, he was not a white man. He was a Christian. He was an American, he was a Christian. And don't be an African, be a Christian. Don't be a Democrat, be a Christian. Don't be an Indian, be a Christian. If he uses a black man, you pray to God, and receive the word of God. A brother with a black and a blue suit, hugging a brother with a T-shirt. A sister with a nice dress, hugging and pressing another sister.
Hallelujah.
Let's stop the noises. If brothers never have the need, it's not good to support you. Are you black and white, you got to be a Christian. Why should I hold a message, brother? If brothers are not meeting, you are not helping to support you, you are a brother, with nine, a person, big soul, so that can. Yes, I love you, sister. If you need to bless them, do some Bible. Let's stop this noise. Let's stop that noise. You stop that noise, I'm here to pray in the name of Jesus Christ. There's no better to define love, there's no better to brother and kindness. There's no better to brother and kindness, we are one. We are one. We are people that are the same God, we are the children. Jesus bless our brothers.
Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Thank you, Lord Jesus.
Yes, the Holy Ghost is here. When you need to love, what a God. You pray this all, tell it now, that you are my disciples, when you have your heart, right for another. I want you to go to a person that you are not talking to, and go and say, "Forgive me, brother, forgive me, sister." You do it right now, if you're not in good books with your wife, you go to her right now. If you're not going good books with your husband, you go to her, and say, "Forgive me, honey." I'm in good books with my wife, I want to say to my wife, that I love you. That I have done wrong things for you. You put that in your wife and your husband, you do it right now, and then I will forgive you. I love you, let's keep on praying, let's keep on praying, you come and do it. I tell you, you do it right now. But if you're in a problem, you're fighting, you go to that brother, and you're sorry, my brother, sorry, my sister, I love you. The past is past, let's hope on a new page. Past is past, past is past, past is past. But I tell you, I'm feeling resistance, I'm feeling resistance. I say, "You drink right now, come to that sister." Don't you dare, we will forget right now. Brother dear, I used to think if I tell you to forgive me. Sister, I used to think if I tell you to forgive me, sister. I thought you were bad woman, I thought you were bad brother, but forgive me, forgive me, forgive me. If you do it right now, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, I'm feeling it, I am feeling it, you do it. You speak again as your pastor, you say, "Papa, forgive me." Forgive me, pastor, forgive me. Forgive me, dear brother, forgive me. Asha, you get in the wrong place, I didn't want that place, forgive me. You go to that Asha and say, "Forgive me, brother." Forgive me, I didn't like that place, you changed me in my seat, forgive me, yes, you do it, you do it right away. When you pray for me, that your prayers want to heal, and that you also be forgiven. When you pray for me. You know that the prophet that you want to court and want his powers, he for, he asked forgiveness to a bull, and say, "Sorry creature. I have come into your territory, forgive me. I'm God's servant, and I'm on my way to pray for my sweet brother." Asking for forgiveness from an animal, and you don't want to ask for forgiveness from your own brother, that you want to come and help God, you're in a certain trouble. No ways, no ways, no ways, no ways, you can't speak again as well another, no ways, no ways, you can't do that, in the house of God, you can't do that. You can't do that, let's not back to the territory. I'm telling you, I'm under instruction by the Holy Ghost to tell him to do that. Let me repeat, so that you may hear you, I said, "I'm under instruction by the Holy Ghost to tell you that you do that right now." You worship that sister's head, and say, "I'm sorry, sister, forgive me." I don't think about it. It is your husband, you tell him, "Honey, forgive me." You have given grace. To do it right now, in your presence. And the one that you have done it, receive the pardon, in the name of Jesus Christ. How can you feel so hard to say, "Good morning" to your own wife? Your daddy saw it, to say, "Honey, good morning." I have said to the church, I can't come here and stand here and say, "I want to greet you all in the name of Jesus Christ, without greeting my wife." I said, "I don't want to be hip, I'll start with my wife, "Honey, good morning, how was the night?" Then if I come and greet the church, it's genuine. I greet you all in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. So how can you didn't say, good morning, honey? When your husband greeted you, why did you keep quiet? Then you answer me, I greet you in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. You can't do that to your husband. Then your husband, your wife cooks for you. Gets your clothes ready, ironed, everything. You also want, you also to say, good morning, why can't you do it? Why can't you start? You hardly say, thank you for the food. Thank you for ironing my shirts. Thank you for taking care of the children. It's the little things that's kept on that makes us, Jesus. You want to call the pastor when you're going out in trouble? Just to say, pastor, how are you? Thank you for your nice shirt. I will restore, say, stop. Thank you for your amen, I'm enjoying that. Thank you for your hallelujah, thank you, my India, thank you, Christian sisters. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, I salute you. You're such a wonderful people, I like those amens, I want to be always, I'm enjoying. In the coming days, the time I'll come. To people who say amen, I'll come. To people who stand up when their words is close up, I'll come. That's what was hindering your prayers. That's what was hindering your prayers. Is the mood of your life. The thing is, this church doesn't see eye to eye with that church. This church speaks against that church. These believers speaks against those believers. And you claim you are going to the same, yes, you think you are about a purpose. This one says, I'm for Paul, this one for Apollo, David, Paul, thank you. Come on, church. Come on, church. You listen, the prophet says, if you go to any, anywhere, there's no message. You can go to the nearby church, maybe if they are talking totally wrong, then he says, you eat the pie and throw the seed away. Not the message, church. Those who just believe in the Lord Jesus Christ with the wrong talking, he says, you, you are there, and there are no other Christians who are reading the full God. You just go in a tin church there. Then you even preach and say, don't go to that one, in the message. You know, the prophet says, you walk into a church where the pastor knows his head like this, the whole church not there. You go to a church where the pastor preaches with this, the whole, they even, they are testifying the system with you. That is, they careful to get into one another's sense. That one yesterday, I say, I wonder what is wrong with everything. Who will produce the life of Jesus Christ, not the life of Namaasa? I took the church back on my life. If I go to the country, when I come back, I come with little chocolates and sweets, and I step by the door, and giving everyone of them, and it cost me a hundred of US dollars to give everyone, it's no gift, just a stitch to give. I come there by air, I come and give you chocolates, everyone, I feel, not just children, even elder. Most of them come and you see that I have got some of them, I give them shirts and tips, just to taste them by life. You know, you could not outgive, brother brother. They say, if you could give him something, he will find a way to give you times. He could not outgive you. That's the secret of my blessings. The calling to come and preach, and if you don't, your mother use my own money, buy the ticket flights, and come and teach you. And God gives me ten times. Amen wants to be John Charlie here. You want to be like John Charlie? Okay, what do you know about John Charlie? He was poor. He gave, then he gave the power, he supported his means. He gave away his house. He gave that house to him. How many of good houses here? They are all, aren't worried, this is true. How many of good houses? They are telling me you don't have houses. No, no, we don't. How many of good houses that they are of their own, in their own names, that they bought? Okay, how many of good cars? Okay, if God tells you to take your car and give it to a preacher, are you able to do it? Be honest, be honest, be honest. Because if you say, God, I'll show you ministers here who doesn't have cars. Who doesn't have good shoes, and they are in the missions, I'll tell you what about this one, did you see him? Don't you know what he's doing, that he has a car? You see, friends? Let's call directly as it is. God told you, move out from that house, and put the preacher in. You went and joined his wife, the wife didn't say, you? If you die today, our children will be from place to place. Brother, I'm important to the pastor, he has very abusive you. I'll go back to my parents. She never said that, she said, if it's from the Lord, honey, do you pray? Yes, then the preacher come. And the world happened. Until he ended up owning half of Arizona, bigger than Fino. All the houses in Fino were his. Now, you just want to be John Charlie. But the offer in prayer goes here, with all these cars that are outside there. You go to the trustees, they project, five, five hundred, nah, maybe, three hundred, you go outside, they see the cars. Go and touch the material of the shirt and the suit that the brother is wearing, and watch what he's putting there, he's putting change that was left when he was a groom more yesterday. I told him to one is back, I said, how much did you collect it? Yesterday, they said, three hundred rands, and I said, oh, with these people, all these cars that are, I said, tomorrow, if they, if they give you again three hundred, give them back. Give them back their changes. God doesn't want any change. He wants for first to first. Who put the change in the pocket? Yeah, that's what the message people just want to hear. It's my pleasure to give that to the ship, praise your brother, 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 if it can't be, you guys. Keep, they don't, they keep them back. To those that give, God will give them more, so that they get something to give. To those that are selfish, God will make sure he doesn't give anything to them, so that they don't get anything to be selfish with. To those that give, God will give them more, so that they get more to give. To those that are selfish and mean, God will make sure he doesn't give them anything, so that they don't get nothing to be mean with. Until you are selfish with your amens, until you are selfish with your baby mothers, you are selfish with your hallelujahs. Come on, give up your faith. Give up your hallelujah, give up your worship, give up your amens, give up your faith. If you do this, hear me, and hear me. If you do this, all of you who doesn't have houses, when I come back, you will be. No wonder you don't have house. No wonder you don't have house. One time, the house is a expensive, I mean, here, he's a rougher child. I have preached in complications, and it's like, the Holy Ghost, people who were nothing within two weeks, they see it's the beauty. One time, I was preaching, and there was a brother and a sister who came from, walking into church, they were talking, honey, we need to build our house. But we don't do that, so, who made the man to build the bricks that they did? This one says, let's look for people who can mend the bricks as we tell them. This one says, no, but if we calculate the cost of to buy them food, to cook for them, and just to buy the bricks that are done, if you just calculate the cost and the time, it's almost the same. Then they are coming into the church, and they said, let's just, we turn off that service. And I was just preaching, without knowing anything. Then I just talked, I said, you, you are worried about bricks? Don't you know that bricks is just soil and water mixed together? The Holy Ghost tracked that system. The next week, a truckload, thirty ton, came full of bricks. Okay. You put the message there, thy house. Put the message, called thy house. The prophet said, believe God for a job. You are preaching, believe the gospel, you and thy house shall be saved. This is, believe God for a job. Just type, a new set of furniture, will send you a new set of furniture. So that you see what I'm telling you, is in the Bible. It's in the message, thy house. I can't remember which paragraph, quick, people, this, quick, quickly, quickly. Let me try to get also here. Did you enjoy the service today? Did you find it? The message is thy house. Yes. From paragraph forty-three, in the passage sixty-one zero eight zero eight. From sixty-one, searching by that way, sixty-one, nineteen sixty-one zero eight zero eight. Paragraph forty-three, did you find it first? Then the prophet says, now, you understand what I mean? Say, it's by faith we do everything. It's by faith we do everything. Not by mind, not by our ability. That's from what? Paragraph forty-three. You have it, we want to fit. Right, paragraph forty-three, now, you understand what I mean? It's by faith we do everything. Not by mind. It's by faith we do everything. Not by education. It's by faith that we do everything. Not by the bank account, by faith, not by a good job. There are people with good jobs here with nothing. Now, it's by faith that we do everything. Believe on the Lord, believe on the Lord for a job. Those without jobs have come to give you jobs. You see your job from where you are hiding there? At least you got your portion. And you pay your time. You pay your time. We don't need to pay the same one or pay time. It's by faith we do everything. Believe on the Lord, believe on the Lord for a job. Believe on the Lord to hunt. When I say this in Jesus, you know, my pastor, pastor, was a hunter. He was in the UK, and I was preaching in church in Ireland. And his son, I pointed at him, I said, you are a hunter, isn't it? You want a game, I said, receive it. Then the pastor came after a week, he just came after a week, said, I'm tired. Joe, my son, can we go hunting? He didn't want to go, but he just said, can I refuse that? Then they took their gun, they went. The moment they got in the camp park, the pastor shot the buffalo. And the son said, Danny, Pastor Namaasa gave me the game when he was preaching. And he left from the court, then he shot it. The moment he shot the buffalo, the men began to come, yeah. It was God given, provided in a sin. But you see, I did enough, because that prophet was not talking about game. No, he wanted to say, to hunt, to give you the wife that you should marry. Then he says, believe on the Lord who give you the husband you should marry. "Believe on the Lord who gives you the husband you should marry." "Believe on the Lord who gives you the husband you should marry." Do you see it, sisters? Come here, let me show you, come. And you put your finger. There, "Believe," right? Just tell, no, there, tell, right there. Yes, tell, "Believe on the Lord to give you the husband you should marry." Do you see him there? You must see him there. You see how much? There is. "Believe on the Lord to give you the husband you should marry." You see, yes, I've come to show you this. The Holy Ghost, because that's why he is. You invite me for the wedding. You start to do contributions for the wedding. You start to do weddings preparation for a wedding. Those that do that, starting to buy their ingredients. Listen to this, listen to this. One time I was preaching, and I was talking about a certain sister who was 35 years old, who wanted to be married. And I began to say, "You set a debt. If you want anything, set a debt." There's a sister that I went and said, "Sister, your wedding will be on the, on the 6th of July." So, I began to say, "Set a debt, set a debt." And there was a sister in church who was not in coaching. She was not beautiful physically, she was not even lighting for kitchen. She was very dark. And she set a debt. Without a boyfriend, she said, "My wedding will be on the 5th of December." Without a boyfriend. And you know what happened? There's a brother who had gone to the pastor. He said, "Pastor, I want to get married, but I don't know who." Then the pastor says, "I just apart from these five sisters. Pick which one, then you pick the one." It was before I went to preach. Then the pastor forgot to talk to the sister. Then I went to preach, the pastor forgot. Then this brother, after I went to preach, then this sister had set a debt. She was just rejoicing, wearing a red blouse. And then I went and said, "Yes, sister, set a debt, set it." Then the pastor said, "She went, she told the pastor, pastor, my wedding will be on the 5th of December." And this was April. The pastor just looked at her and said, "I can't stand in the way, God bless you." And she was something who's really beautiful, really beautiful. When maybe say, "Ah," she trusts in the beauty. There's their sisters who are just sisters and just goodies. They just said to the life. And their brothers, they're just brothers, no, just fools, the more they go. What is a cultural error? So, no, but after the service, this brother went home, he had a dream. And they were at a youth meeting. The pastor's going out in the meeting, then the youth meeting was over, they were dismissed. So, and they are going home, he sees himself in a group of sisters. Then he saw that the rest of the sisters pulling back, and he's left with one sister, the one who set a debt. And they are going. Then he woke up. He felt like he wanted to rebuild the spirit of last, but he's, you know, but I never thought about this. Then he called the pastor, pastor, "Did you speak to that sister?" The pastor, "Oh, so..." Then he said, "Wait, don't talk yet. I've got a new candidate. I one sister saw it, so..." And he goes, "Marry me." The heads of nils are not proud. Come on, set a debt. Come on, set a debt. You can speak from where you're standing and saying, "This will not end until the covenant end up with..." Set a debt. 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 You set a debt to my devotion. Set a debt to my faith. While you suit going in a rapture, there's a lot of things that we've not yet done. There's a bunch of things to be accomplished. And yet, the rapture is so close, let's do a quick job. We have spent too long with the message, we've made a supernatural. We have spent too long, we've had a bushel of awareness, we have spent too long on this mountain. Come on, let's take another one. We have spent too long without funds and purposes and reason, we can't hear. Now you wonder in the double portion. They want even the double passion, and now it's bad to know, but yes. We have suffered enough in this place in the past. We have been in the natural service. We have had so many churches, services every day. We have had a series every day. We want the opening of that series nation.
Amen.
It's time to, you know, your sharpest, brother. You want Jesus Christ, too. "Believe on the Lord to send you some new furniture." Not to buy that. To send you new for your office. And the pastor, new for your office. Not to buy. Not to buy. Not to buy. You want a new phone? Not to buy. You want a new car? I have to keep my life. Some of the things that you feel to check, I have to keep to my mind. Can we go on, Dragozulu? Your sofas are worn out? Do you swear this? Yeah, now I shout the sisters coming in. You have worn out sofas? You see the new set of furniture. Your bed is too old? You're above 10 years, you're bad. You can't really feel your hair, so that's bad.
Amen.
Ah, thanks for all the good, thank you. God is giving each children their desires. His desire, his eyes, in the name of Jesus Christ. I say, "His desire, in the name of Jesus." I say, "His desire, in the name of Jesus Christ." Right at the beginning, you see, that is seen in the book, up there, you have seen it. See it, Paul. Oh, thank you, rocking your dad in January, I give it to you in the name of Jesus. You did well, you rose up in January. As we proceed, as we proceed. Or if the barrel can goes empty, and the cruise gets dry, and there's no food, and the children are hungry, believe on the Lord. In another place, the prophet said, "The children have shoes." "Believe on the Lord for anything." You hate yourself. And you wear this for anything. We are now in trial, in hard times, in hard times. If you are asking anything, in my name, I will do it. So, thank you, Prophet. Then he says, "As long as it's just right, just believe on the Lord. And thou shall see. It shall come." I have never seen it fail in my life. God bless you. God bless you, Namibia. God bless you, Bravo. God bless you, Sash. I say, "God bless you." I say, "God bless you." God bless you with your deeds. God bless you with your hidden. God bless you with your desires. God bless you. God bless you through your path. God bless you at your place. God bless you at your place. God bless you in the marriage. God bless you. God bless. God bless you. God bless you. God bless you. God bless you at the corner there. God bless you. God bless you. God bless you. God bless you, Sash, the prophet. Allow me just to read my Moses' prose. Love me. Sorry for keeping you long for all the services. Forgive me. How many forgive me for keeping you long? Yeah, it is too close. So, I rock in my head, in my north restoration time. Restoration of what? It will start with the restoration of the word of God. Remember that rightfully it leaves. And the creature attacked the leaves. Would you fellowship among brethren?
Yes.
Fellowship was broken. Even here in Namibia, no wonder Namibia is a desert, but the Bible said, "The desert shall blossom." Did you notice in Namibia, many trees have got thorns? This one is a peach, this one is a thorn, this one is a thorn, this one is a thorn. It's the spirit of the nation, it's a desert. But I bring you the word of the Lord. The desert shall blossom. I had a hard time last, the first time I get people, they said, "God, why?" He said, "It's a desert." "Why?" But the desert shall blossom. Can I tell you something? You are normal what you wear. But I have seen. You have changed. God bless you, brother, and sister, in Namibia. The Lord has remembered you and has visited you, and he did well to receive you. My tail is no more pitch. Your tail is no more pitch. Down there in the city, they'll see you no more. For you moved in better. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Hallelujah. I know you are already in peace. This is the true or right of us. Then you just go to the highlights, I must say. So, to restore is to bring back that which you have been. And to the rightful position. In the beginning was the word. And once the word is back in the church, the Holy Ghost is back in the church. Now, listen, friends, Kevin. The creature attacked the leaves, which is fellowship of our brethren. Now, when a tree doesn't have leaves, no matter how the winds blow, that tree doesn't move. No matter how the Holy Ghost comes. When you are bedpiting, pressing it up, no leaves, no furniture, just, you can't be changed. That's as far as they can leave to their hands. As far as standing. The one is very strict.
Preach it.
The pastor want to see. The pastor wants to see. When the leaves are back, hallelujah. Preach it, Jesus. Oh, you hear them, brother. Oh, God, God bless you. Amen. The leaves are back. All you is God, yes, amen. Come and rejoice. Come and take me to the feast. You see this restoration of the breakthroughs? The pastor is preaching. The some leader is singing.
Now sing. Amen. Amen.
It's like it's performing. And they are in a seminar. They are watching. Their sleeves are gone. There's no fellowship. You have to be asked by the some leader. Let's stand.
Yes, brother.
Let's do this. No, he's naked, so he just led by the one who to pick up a song. But we can also enter into the song, and in the spirit of the composer, and we ride on through. And the singers start to be using the song service. Depression is defeated in the song service. Vision and promises that comes down in the song service. I want to preach, let them test. There was a boy who was a witch. Singing, singing, yes. And he told me with the grandmother and the aunt. And I began to preach, they were like this. And I began to preach, now myself are the last preacher. I can right penetrate through a wall. And sometimes I preach without including any of us, I don't even care. And I began to preach. I rolled my sleeves, and what I did yesterday, I took off my hat. And I began to preach, I almost wanted to take off the shoes again. And I began to preach. I began to hear the devil. I began to fight him. I began to fight him. And I kept on fighting. And he's coming back. And I'm fighting. And I'm rebuking. I began to hit myself. I began to hit it. As I hit, the devil is moving back. He's moving back. And I'm fighting. I feel I'm trying to hear the amen. I gotta hear him, hear the hallelujah. I said, I'm preaching out. I'm preaching out. I'm preaching. I'm preaching in the name of Jesus. I'm preaching. I'm preaching. I'm preaching, God, that's my church. And people began to receive the horses. People began to sit there. People began to come out. Then we went out. Then the pastor of the church went to my pastor, I'd gone there with my pastor. Then he went to my pastor, he said, there's a young boy here with a mystery, don't understand. Then the pastor said, go to him, go with him to position. Then the little boy came, and I was caught, I went drop six hundred case. I said, young man, we want to sleep, we are tired. Tell me what kind of demon that we are holding, just tell me. He said, which devil? I said, we do it with who? He said, with my grandmother. I said, where is he? It was three houses away. I said, what is he actually doing in this church? He said, we work in this church so that there won't be a firebrand so many people. Because if they have a good song service, they'll have a good preaching. You some leaders, come beg up. You need to fast in the ministry. This is why you see people, they attack some leaders. They are singers. They easily fall in a dower, it's a thing. Private that play the music and give us. Leave the light. People who sit there. You live like, you want to sing here. You fast here, the beat of us is dirty. We fast to preach. You fast to read songs. We can't equate ourselves. Do special things, do the same. Then I said, what did you do at the door there when you come to church? He said, I did this. To my first twice, I said, to do what he said, to blind the preacher's eyes. I said, did you do it today? He said, ah, not today. This is why. Don't need to worry about receiving next. You don't know who they are and what they are here for. You don't know who they are and what they are here for. You just say, he can pray far. Go far. Go far. He says, you save your God. In a way that you feel yes to save you. There's a lot of people in church who came and said, pastor, there's a certain church who taught me not to cry and to scream. He said, you disturb the preacher. I said, sure. They might be witches. You, you don't listen to them. If you feel like crying, you cry out. If you like shouting, you shouting out. Some they are disturbed by your shout because your shout is a magnet for the Holy Ghost. Some are disturbed by your amen because your amen is a magnet for the Holy Ghost. God, they are shocked to say amen. God, they are shocked to say hallelujah. God, they are know, but they control you. Amen, by adding the house of God. He doesn't disturb your preacher anyway. He did do it here, the prophet saying, I once suffered, like when you go to hunt, and you have got a good job there, the man will be saying, sneaky boy. Sneaky boy. Sneaky boy. And he just says, sneaky boy. We hear that, don't they? You say, sneaky boy. That's where the problem is, sneaky boy. Preaching pastor. Preaching pastor. Preaching pastor, preaching pastor. Preaching pastor. Give us more. Give us more. Give us more. Give us more for Jesus. Sneaky boy. That's why I want minister to come behind me when I preach it. Sneaky boy. They come with their appointees. Sneaky boy. Sneaky boy. Encourage your sister. Encourage your brother, just do it. Let's be honest here, let's be honest. Amen, I feeling good. What is that? Where the spirit of the Lord is? Where the spirit of the Lord is? Then they are devils. Piling up in the church. When you're getting the church, everybody's spoiling their arms like this. They are in a worrying mood. You haven't seen them. This is not a bathroom. This is the house of God. This is not a bathroom. This is the house of God. This is not a lounge. This is the house of God. This is not a dining room. Can eat in church. This is the house of God. Can eat in church. This is why you see in Brannam, there was a crying room, a nursing room. Not in the house of God, not in San Juan. You need your children back there. This is not a dining room to eat. You believe the Holy Spirit. So, a light should bring the fire, he had to repair the altar. The Father had a promise, prophesied from morning until the evening, until they cut it, and so nothing happened, while the altar was in peace. Then the light was watching, and he said, just go loudly, maybe your body is rested. That's when you hear the, I can't remember. In the name of Jesus. Come on. You don't cast out devils to this point. Maybe one time, some years back, someone was led by the Holy Ghost to just go and learn the Bible, and it was different, and it became a creed. But when the Holy Ghost is there, like yesterday, just go and say, go and review such and such. You ask the pastor, was it incorrect?
Hallelujah.
Now, you tell me that we must not have descendants of spirits. And you say, thank us for Brother Brandon. No. Brother Brandon was the son of man, revealing the son of man. That was the sign of the Messiah revealing the citizens of the land. That's Luke 17:30, not 1 Corinthians 14. 1 Corinthians 14 is, descendants of spirits by the working of the Holy Spirit in the church. Then Mark 10:7 is the descendant by the work. Luke 4:12. Luke 17:30. That's the sign of the Messiah, that only one man has in this generation. But we have descendants of spirits in the church. This is the sign of this day. Now, I'm coming to my subject. That creature attacked the fruits, which is the gift of the Spirit. It's the same creature, then changed the form, and went to attack the fruits from the tree because it determined to paralyze the tree. Then the fruits were gone. No more gifts of it. Then it was done, it went to attack the bark, which is the doctrine of the church. I suffer not willing to preach. Willing to dress in mortis. Men marry one wife, one husband, baptize in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. That doctrine, once you take the bark out from the tree, it lies right there, and it's dead. Because the bark yelps the sap to come for some roots and go to the leaves. And when it attacked the bark, then it went to jump off the stem. But then, but the life went, and it went deep in the roots. That's its destination. And the drop site, and the drop site, does hope for a tree. When it's cut down, its shoots will fill the bank and will never fail. Does hope for a tree. Does hope for a tree. Does hope for the tree, when it's cut down, its shoots will sprout your thing, and you will never fail. Now, we kept quiet in this message. When people took away gifts from the church, took away tans from the church, and we kept quiet. And they took away vision. Today, they are now taking away evangelists, apostles. You see, the something that took away kids is taking away the five foot ladies. It's not the people, it's the spirit. I bring back the speaking of praise in the church. I bring back vision in the church. I bring back purpose in the church in the name of Jesus Christ. Let me thank Ryan and Tom. I bring back the working of the Holy Spirit in this church in Namibia. You took away tans, vision, promises, interpretation that I will restore, save the Lord. Can I tell you in the name of Jesus Christ, we shall see visions again. We shall prophesy again. We shall help the descendants of spirits again. We shall run prayer lines again. We shall speak the word again. We shall make the descendants sing in their youth again. We shall raise the dead back to life again. We shall raise the people again. We shall open the bright eyes again. And you receive it, Namibia, in the name of Jesus Christ, in the goodness of his power. Now, I want to read a quotation. The prophet says, in the message. Now, you can hear tongues and prophets in the message of the prophet. When the prophet says, say what the tape said he meant, you preaching the way you are preaching on the tape. You say exactly what the tape said. This is the revelation of the message of the hour. It's not a repetition of quotations. It's rightly dividing the word of truth. Otherwise, we just have to come here to come and read the Bible like we are reading in office, for telling the mission. What does the Bible say? Some take away kids of the spirit, and today, the third spirit is taking away the five foot. Yet the Bible says in Ephesians 4, this is, wherefore, he said, when he ascended on high, he left captivity, curse, and gave kings. When he ascended on high, he left captivity captive, and he gave some apostles. When he ascended on high, he left captivity captive, and he gave some teachers. When he ascended on high, he left captivity captive, and he gave some teachers, some persons. After that, kings, miracles, healings, signs and wonders, dividing his years. When he ascended on high. Now, I said a moment ago, the fourth vine came into full fruition in this age. Yet fruit would mature and ripen, that is correct. This evil spirit, church full of iniquity, will be reviewed as the mustard seed that grow into a tree where it loaves to the force of the dead. And here, who will be the antichrist, the midst of iniquity. All this is true. And if this is true, then it must also be true that the bride church will mature. The bride church will mature. We will not lament children. Say, the bride church will mature. And we are coming into maturity. The bride church will mature. Closing shortly. Then he says, and here, righteousness shall be an identification with the law. and here, righteousness shall be an identification with your Lord by means of the word. And he head who will come to there is the mystery of goodness, which indeed is Christ. And here's the first church, with all cunning and their body of power, made up of political forces, physical forces and demons of darkness come against this true vine. The true vine, with the fullness of the Spirit and the word, will do the favor of power that Jesus did. And repeat, the true vine with the fullness of the Spirit. The true vine with the fullness of the Spirit. And the word will do the very act of power that Jesus did. Then he sees near his headstone, becoming like him through the word. Jesus will come, that the bright and true may be forever united as one. Already the physical manifestations of what I have been telling you are seen all around us. The ecumenical move of the test is factual. But also, it is a fact that the prophet, for the last age, must be bringing forth a message from God. That will forehand the second coming of the Lord. For his message, for his message, will the hearts of the children be taken back to the Pentecostal place. And with the restoration of the word, comes the restoration of power. You want power in the church? Preach the word of Father Gaieth. You want the opening of the bright eyes in the church? Preach the message of Father Gaieth. So with the restoration of the word, comes the restoration of power. With the restoration of the word, comes the restoration of your world. With the restoration of the word, comes the restoration of Jesus. So with the restoration of the word, comes the restoration of miracles. So with the restoration of the word, comes the restoration of signs and wonders. With the restoration of the word, comes the restoration of power. Power to do what? You shall receive power after the Holy Ghost is come to Pentecost, and it shall be by witnesses beginning in Namibia to the other nations of the world. Come and put your hands together. This is what people are doing today. This is what people, this is the food, is a seed of evil. I have great announcements to make. I have great announcement to make. Because the word has been restored. Your health is back. Because the word of God is restored. That job that you lost is back. Because the word of God is restored. That time you lost is back. That business you lost is back. Receive your restoration, it's restoration time. I have come to the climax of my sermon. It's restoration time. With the restoration of the word, comes the restoration of the power to heal the sick. Comes the restoration of the power to cast the devils. Comes the restoration of power to raise the dead. Comes the restoration of power to speak in tongues. Comes the restoration of power to see visions, prophecies, dividing his miracles and signs and wonders. They both things are here now, because they speak in the name of Jesus Christ, because they come from the word of God. They follow the word, whose signs are further than belief. Believe what the word of God, in the beginning, was the word, and the word was discovered, and the word was discovered, and the word was discovered. Was brought into Christ, and the word was in Christ, was brought into the church, and Christ is the Israel and God will be here. And the church is the Israel and Christ will be here. And Christ is the church, it's a continuation of the faith of Christ. Christ is the church, it's a continuation of this right here. Christ is the church, it's a continuation of giving and touching. Christ is the church, it's a continuation of passing our devils. There's a big name of the world. We are not in the apostles. It's not the essence of the world, it's the essence of the Holy Spirit in the church. When the word comes, the Holy Ghost is back in the church. When the word is restored, the Holy Ghost is in the church. Watch the working of the Holy Spirit in the church. Get ready to speak in tongues, get ready to see visions, get ready to see signs and wonders, get ready to see miracles, get ready to raise the dead, get ready for a shout out to heal the sick. I say, get ready, those things are here, those things are here, that power is here, because the word has come. The word is now in the Bible, the word is now in the Bible, the word is now in the Bible. The word is here, the word is here, the healing is here, your job is here, your choice is here, your compassion is here. Receive what you need, receive what you want, receive your restoration, receive your restoration, in the name of Jesus Christ. Receive your restoration, with the restoration of the world, what good but the effort is far, is of the Lord of God. I have come to the climax of my sermon. Now, we are back to Pentecost. I have announcements. What we have been waiting for and looking for? Spirit. There's a man here who can tell you the light of your life. There's a man here, the angels of God are in the building. That's the Peter of fire. Yeah. The Holy Ghost is here. The Holy Spirit is here. With the restoration of the word, comes the restoration of power. The power to heal the sick. The power to raise the dead. The power to speak things in your systems. I can boldly say, whatever you lost, restoration. As we stand upon our feet, as we close our eyes and look to our heads. We know what they caused, what caused the shadow of Peter to heal the sick. We now have what it takes to raise the dead. We now have what it takes for ghetto to be healed. We now have what it takes for the people to walk. God has been restored. I may be restored. The church and Pentecost was not called. The church and Pentecost was not formed. It was a powerhouse. It was a powerhouse! It was a powerhouse! It was a powerhouse! Sweet Lord, sweet cherion, coming for to carry me home. Sweet Lord... Receive your restoration. Do not want to lose. I don't know where it is, but the Holy Ghost is here, he can bring it to you. With our eyes, remember his beard. Then he says, for it is a fact that the prophet, for his last age, must be bringing forth a message of God that will forehand the second coming of the world. For by his message will the hearts of the children be taken back to the Pentecostal place. And with the restoration of the word, will come the restoration of the power. What crucial times are these in which we live? How careful we must be that we remain true to this word, not take from it or attempt to eat. For he who would speak where God has not spoken next to him a liar. What I have practically in mind is this, about the 10th of the century, the hunger for God, that was generated in the Philadelphian age, brought a cry for the spirit of God. And when the cry was answered by God sending for the manifestation in tongues, in a petition and prophecy, a group immediately and most contrary to the word drew up a doctrine that tongues was the evidence of big battles with the Holy Ghost. Tons were far from evidence, they were manifestations but not evidence. The falsity of the doctrine cannot only be seen by a lack of culture to support it, tell it, but those who subscribed to that doctrine immediately organized on the basis of the doctrine, proving that they were not in the truth as they would have people believe. Or it looked good, it looked like the return of Pentecost, but it proved it wasn't. It could not be for it organized, fact is dead, not life. It looked so close to the real, that multitude were deceived. Now, if it wasn't the genuine, what was it? It was the husk, the chaff, in the green, soft shit form, it looked like it was the real thing. But as one can go into the field and see what looks exactly like wheat and yet is only the husk, for the wheat seed has not yet fallen. So this was but the salty shell that looked like the ring gray yet to come. The original wheat seed of Pentecost was to come back in the last age. It had been buried a nice year, it set up a shoot, a sardis, it growled a tasso in Philadelphia, and it was too mature, laudisias appearing afterwards. But it could not be back to the original until the word was restored. Hallelujah, said the prophet. The prophet had not yet come upon the scene, but now, according to the time wherein we stand in the Laudisian age, the prophet's message of the revelation then serving must already be in the land. Once more, says the Lord, must be there, ready to be manifested with the unvariable vindication, thus is the true seed already maturing, and then the harvest in time. Thus comes the message of the hour. Oh, what the heaven parents! We're now in heaven. We are baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, for the revelation of our sins. We are blessed in the way they were dressed, we are preaching the way they preached. This is why when the prophet asked and said, "Will Paul enter in?" and he goes towards the wheel, then these people, he said, "Hi," and my people also going, "Because I preached what exactly one preached." We are preaching exactly what Paul preached, we are preaching exactly what Malachi four preached. If I preached what Malachi four preached, let the same God of freedom, presence, come down to visit and give us the same message that he gave us in this generation. Pray for me, one reprieve, all the believers. All things are possible to them that can begin. Pastor come and check this, and he said, "Put the bright on top there, they will pray for them." Oh, baby! Oh, baby! Oh, baby! Oh, baby! Lord, I believe, Lord! Lord, I believe! Do you not believe? Come, ministers, why do pray for these young kids and pastors and apostles? That some would could have felt a better name. Precious heaven and father, we thank you for that word. We thank you, God Jesus, for speaking to us, Lord, that now remain the same yesterday to day forever. We lay our hands upon these empty chiefs, apostles and pastors of all different items that have been brought here, representing not the ones that smoke hot. Heaven and father, we read in the book of Acts 1911, that God brought special miracles by the hand of the apostle Paul. Until evil spirits were casted out and diseases were casted out. We are not Saint Paul, but we are the same Lord Jesus Christ, heaven and father, to fulfill the word. I pray for this entity together with this minister, so God, heaven and father, that this entity will ever though be taken to, heaven and father, to people that are sick and afflicted by it. We give a shopping bill to the devil, to the enemy, to mankind, to God's people, in the name of Jesus Christ, wherever these things will be laid upon. Heaven and father, may even take place, miracles and so forth, oh God and the father, we send them in the name of Jesus Christ by prayer, we thank you in Jesus' name, amen. And till we meet again, children, we can spend long, quite briefly, till we meet again, getting such a wide open book. It will be so for us, it will be a masterpiece. You know, so long. I am Jesus. Love, and heal thy sin. It's a sad feeling. Love, and heal thy sin. Amen, so bless you, hallelujah. Let's give you a lot of praise, please. Hallelujah. Amen. Amen, the pastor said, "Keep your fingers off there." Amen. You are the Alpha, Alpha. That is killing them. You are the Alpha, Alpha. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised. And singing our hallelujah. You are the Alpha, Alpha. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised. When I pray, you are the Alpha. You are the Alpha, Alpha. We worship you, my Lord. Oh, you are worthy to be praised. We give you glory. We give you honor. We worship you, Lord. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised. We give you glory. We give you honor. We worship you, my Lord. Oh, you are worthy to be praised. That's it for the last time, you are the Alpha. You are the Alpha, Alpha. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised. You are the Alpha. You are the Alpha, Alpha. We worship you, Lord. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you, Lord. You are the Father. We give you glory. We give you honor. We worship you, Lord. You, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised. We give you glory. We give you honor. We worship you, my Lord. You are worthy to be praised. Hallelujah. Let's just bow our heads, amen. With our heads bowed, the weight is being preached in the power. And the Lord has done something for us, amen. Let's bow our heads and close our eyes. If you have given your life to the Lord in this meeting, or you want to give your life to the Lord, I want to invite you. While the atmosphere is still good, that you can just come here at the altar, we want to pray for you and help you how to get yourself to the right track with the Lord. Everybody that has given their lives or those that want to give their life, even if you were delivered, those that were delivered from evil spirits, you need to put your life in order so that those spirits do not come back to you anymore. I want to invite you just come forward here and near here at the altar, there is ministers that can pray for you. Please come at the altar, in this space here. Come beside all over here, even those of you who are delivered, those of you whose web spirits that were cast out of your life. You need to put your life in order. Come at the altar and you can be prayed for and you can find your track back to the Lord. The rest of us, let's close our eyes. Let's be in prayer. Let's be interceding for those that are here. And say, "Lord, help those people that are at the altar, touch their lives. Help them to find you like I found you. Where God took you from, that's where you want to take them to." Let's be in that atmosphere, let's be in prayer. The Holy Spirit is here. God is still moving in the hearts of the people. Come to the altar, even if you want to renew your life. Maybe you've gone back. You only came to church this Sunday. But you want to come back to the Lord and say, "I want to come back" and start going to church, amen. You can also come. While the Lord is still here, his spirit is working. Let's come. Don't miss the day of your visitation. That's what the Lord has said in this meeting. He said, "This is the day of your visitation. Do not miss it. Don't miss the opportunity. The way that is called the mercy, that's how God saves. The way that is despised by the world, that's the way of salvation. The way that people are shamed of, that is the way of salvation. Come to the altar, there is space here. Let's sing that song, "Pass me not, O gentle Savior." While the ministers continue praying for the people that are here. Whoever want, even if you have, you know you were back Sweden and you want to come back to the Lord, this is your opportunity. To say, "Lord, I want to renew my vow with you. I used to serve you before, I used to be on fire. This was my message of restoration. Lord, you have come to restore me, that I can go back to sanction. You have lost the joy of your salvation. You say, "Lord, I have lost the joy of my salvation. Restore unto me the joy of my salvation. Create me a clean heart, O God." He is here. Let's be in prayer where you are. Pray for these people. Just like a saint. Oh, God! There is a prayer. Precious prayers. In Jesus' name. Precious prayers. In Jesus' name. Just like a prayer. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Oh, there is a prayer. Just like a prayer. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Oh, there is a prayer. Just like a saint. Oh, God! Oh, God! All the world. There is a prayer. Precious prayers. In Jesus' name. One more time. There is a prayer. Just like a prayer. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. Hallelujah. There is a prayer. Heavenly praise. In Jesus' name. In Jesus' name. There is a prayer. Precious prayer. Just like a saint. Oh, God! Oh, God! All the world. There is a prayer. Precious prayers. In Jesus' name. Oh, God! Give me so good. Hallelujah! God! Give me so good. God is so good. Give me so good. Give me so good. Give me so good. One more time, God is so good. God! Give me so good. Hallelujah! God is so good. God is so good. Give me so good. Give me so good. Oh, bless the Lord! Bless the Lord! Oh, my soul! And God! There is a deep, deep praise. Praise is holy. Oh, bless the Lord! Bless the Lord! Bless the Lord! Oh, my soul! And God! There is a deep, deep praise. Blessed in that. See, I love it so! Oh, God! Give me so good. I love it so! God is so! Oh, hallelujah! God! Give me so! Give me so! Give me so good. Oh, bless the Lord! Bless the Lord! Oh, my soul! And God! There is a deep, deep praise. Praise is holy. Oh, bless the Lord! Bless the Lord! Oh, my soul! And God! There is a deep, deep praise. Is holy. Amen, hallelujah. After we have this, before we close, we're gonna sing African's chorus, but they just, I don't know how you can pronounce it for pastors here in America. Africans say, "Ala nasis mudiyere." Let's sing it. Who's on the first one, I got? For the next one, I'll have this song, you come and close to us, amen. Let's sing it, "Ala nasis mudiyere." Ala nasis mudiyere. Ala nasis mudiyere. Ala nasis mudiyere. Oh, yaradi smuli yaradi. Ala nasi smuli yaradi. Ala nasi smuli yaradi. Ala nasi smuli yaradi. Oh, yaradi smuli yaradi. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Zatana jaru sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Woo, hallelujah! Di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Ala nasi smuli yaradi. Ala nasi smuli yaradi. Ala nasi smuli yaradi. Yaradi smuli yaradi. Ala nasi smuli yaradi. Ala nasi smuli yaradi. Ala nasi smuli yaradi. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Zatana jaru sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Woo! Oh, the very host man, "Ala nasi smuli yaradi". Ala nasi smuli yaradi. 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 Oh, yaradi smuli yaradi. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Zatana jaru sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Di gomos, di gomos, di gomos sa. Zatana jaru sa. Let's close our eyes. Let me bow our head, amen.
It has been a great celebration. Our dear heavenly Father, we don't have enough mighty God to express our joys after all. For all that you have done for us. Father, we are reminded in the Bible of mighty God, the apostle Peter, John, O mighty God, and James of Africa. When they ascended on Mount, mighty God transpired a nation with the Lord. Father asked us such a tremendous time, mighty God. They could not have any word to say but just to say, "Lord, if it be possible, would have made our journey about it here, Father? How will you, mighty God, continue, mighty God? How mighty God is this place, oh Father? Father, whenever, Father, we have to depart, mighty God. But we know not, Father God, that is a man nothing, oh Father, that has been written in the Bible. Every individual shall carry it to the Father. Every single God, every single fire, then, oh Father. Let our own mighty God and Father God, they say it with others, oh Father, mighty God. Hallelujah! Thank you, Father, this afternoon, for every blessing. We thank you for healing. We thank you for baptizing the Holy Ghost. We thank you, mighty God, for everything, oh Father. We want to thank you for yourself, mighty God. For the human master, that you might see you, mighty God. Father, we use your name, that's true. May, mighty God, even Father, when the devil try to fight him, oh God, he speaks healing, oh Father. Here, oh mighty God, I thank you, mighty God, for the ministers, mighty God, for the churches, oh God, for the elders, mighty God. Oh, brothers, thank you, Father, all the supporting ministers, oh Father. Thank you, mighty God, for the fans, for the home, oh mighty God. For the people, oh Father. For every prayer, for every minute of our time, mighty God, to make this meeting possible, oh Father. We thank you for this, I can be, oh Father. Not only we are in mighty, oh God. When the king invited your father, oh mighty God, nobody accepted the invitation. But, Father, since they accepted the invitation, mighty God, I know they are not going with the empty, oh Father. But anything, oh Father, they accept it, oh God. They are carrying their blessing, oh Father. Will you keep the temple that they want to rock the roof upon, mighty God? From their blessing, oh Father. May you seal them up, oh Father, mighty God. If you are looking, oh Father, God, stop at your mighty God. The end of the world, mighty God. May the outcome, oh God, be with you, mighty God. Father, we thank you, Father, mighty God. Somebody is struggling, oh Father, mighty God, to far place, the near place, mighty God. May your pillar of fire, mighty God, continue to grow, oh mighty God. The cloud, mighty God. We thank you, mighty God. For your mighty and precious name, Father, we thank you, Lord. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen, amen.
Let's get on.